Alrighty, it's Coles meeting order. Please rise to the place, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, law and nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, any citizens are to be heard. Hearing nine, four, consideration possible action in two minutes.
So, move.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Five is consideration possible action on knowledge and notice of resignation of Aaron Thule, Secretary of Logan County Election Board.
Here's her letter. Aaron has accepted a position with the State Election Board.
I'll move to accept. Well, I'm a good state, but I'll stay on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Marvin, that's great job.
Me? Okay, number six. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll play it.
Yeah, same.
Discussion possible action concerning the ongoing Logan County E-911 P-SAP operation or responsibilities concerning the incorporated areas of Cachen located within the geographical boundaries of Logan County and corresponding decision direction of Logan County Board of Commissioners to the Director of ACOG and Manager of ACOG 911 regarding responsibilities and fees. A little over a year ago, I was contacted concerning the dispatch responsibilities for the city of Cachen within Logan County. There's a small area of Cachen. And this little map shows it as being ACOG community. So, what you see here is the county line. This is the city of Cachen over in Kingfisher County, and these are the incorporated portions inside of Logan County. It's my understanding that the municipality wants their dispatching to be done by Kingfisher, the Kingfisher P-SAP over in Logan County. Understanding and supporting fully the autonomy of municipalities to determine what it is they want to do, how they want to operate, couldn't really argue that point too much. It is up to the board to make those determinations. So, I, in March of this year, we met with Ms. Mary Harris, she's here today, and she is representing the municipality. That's my understanding. So, we had a meeting back in the 29th of March to discuss those issues. And again, it's the wishes of this city or township to have this dispatch done out of Kingfisher County. It's currently being committed by the Logan Guthrie P-SAP here in, that is being performed by the Guthrie PD folks for us as well. So, one of the things that I was concerned about, and I had Troy pull the documentation that we could find, was the resolutions that establish the tax base for the E-911 Dispatch Service. So, we found the resolutions for Logan County, and also we got the resolution for the city that they came up with. So, what happened was is that, like we're supposed to, the county put a resolution forward to collect taxes on all of the unincorporated portions of the county. So, the telephone exchanges for Cachen that was outside of the unincorporated areas, that would be this pink area in here, right? So, we're collecting taxes on all the pink areas here as a county. We don't collect taxes in any of the municipalities for, like Guthrie or any of the others, because they collect taxes themselves and submit that to ACOG on their own. So, our resolution only had us collecting taxes for the unincorporated portions. Well, I asked the question, what about these small incorporated areas inside Logan County? And they said, well, we think that that's being collected anyway. And so, if it was, it was being collected outside of what the resolution said. And there was a possibility in my mind that those people could be double taxed, you know? And so, I wanted to find out what was going on there. Well, this last week, we finally got an answer back from AT&amp;T. And the answer is that no taxes for landlines are being collected for the incorporated portions of Cachen inside Logan County, not at all. Which fits our resolution, right? Because we're not supposed to be collecting taxes for them. But the city's not collecting taxes either, because their resolution for back in 2006 only addressed collecting taxes for the incorporated portion inside Kingfisher County. So, what we're here today to determine is officially to direct ACOG to allow this municipality, the autonomous right to determine whether they want their dispatch done. And then after that, it's up to, as far as I can see, it's up to Cachen to determine what they want to do with taxes for that. Now, there are other taxes collected for E-911. There's wireless and your cell phones, or voice-over-IP and cell phones. Those are collected based on the address of where they're at. So, if there's anybody with a cellphone within the incorporated portions, like these little areas here inside Logan County, if they put those down as an address, those will be sent to the Kingfisher areas or whoever services Kingfisher. It will no longer come to ACOG to support that. But that's kind of where we're at. Our decision here is to officially determine whether or not to allow the, officially allow the dispatching to be done out of the Kingfisher P-SAP. And all funds that would be collected from Cachen, whether it's in Cachen within Logan County, would also go over there. Right now, the only funds collected again is the cellphone coverage stuff. And there's like 800, 805 total citizens in both sides of this municipality for this, is what I understood.
So, what does Guthrie say about this? Y'all on board? So, you on board so far, though?
Right now, the call routes to Guthrie, and then they don't dispatch those services for Cachen, they transfer it to Kingfisher who then dispatches them. So, what we're going to try to do is make it so the call goes originally to Kingfisher and get rid of that transfer in there and make it quicker.
So, would that be when the unincorporated area?
They won't be affected. They will still be dispatched by the Guthrie-Logan P-SAP. And the reason for that is the people outside the incorporated areas are still serviced by our county sheriff, and that's real important that we maintain that. The county sheriff doesn't have law and order responsibility inside the incorporated areas. Those are dispatched from the Cachen PD, which is kind of, when you think about it, that's why I thought it was best, that and to maintain the autonomy of the municipality. There's several municipalities that are across county lines, right? And so, it really is not up to the county to determine, you know, what a municipality does with its 911 service, in my mind. So, as far as, you know, what we've proposed and what we've talked about, I apologize for you not getting those emails, but those were all sent to the chief and the city manager over there. Ever since March, we've been talking about this. It hasn't been a secret.
How much money are we talking about on these fees?
About 10 bucks. About $10 and about, we looked at the call volume on that inside the incorporated areas of Logan County, or Cachen in Logan County. The call volume is somewhere around 10 or 12 a year.
Sheriff Gankin?
No, I'm perfect.
Any questions?
No? Must work.
No real questions. It's not going to affect anybody in the unincorporated area, am I correct?
That's correct.
It does not.
Yeah, I'm good.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, would someone please clarify that motion?
Okay, so the motion is to allow, or to direct ACOG to allow dispatching, if I'm getting the terms correct, the municipality of Cachen within the geographic boundaries of Logan County to be dispatched out of the Kingfisher P-SAP.
For the 911 calls to be routed to the Kingfisher P-SAP.
Okay. She understands the technical terms better of the.
What's P-SAP stands?
Public Safety Endpoints.
Do you want to put an effective date, or is that immediately, or how do you all need to do that?
Well, the next step is ACOG has to write a letter to AT&amp;T releasing it, and then we'll get the call routing changed. It'll take a couple months to get all that done.
So, basically, we'll put forward the resolution, and then it takes as long as it takes, is that what you think?
Once you get the resolution. Okay, so is a resolution going to be drawn that'll come back to this board?
Do we need to do a resolution, or is just, I mean, just a decision by the Board of Commissioners here? I don't think we really need a resolution.
We just need something in writing.
These minutes?
That'll work.
Okay, once they're approved?
I believe so, yes. If I find any different legislation, I think that'll work.
Well, so, have you got the?
Motion.
The motion written?
Sort of. I mean, I'll clean it up, as the way that I understand.
There's also the funding that goes along with that.
Okay. So, the way, just so that we're, make sure that we're clear here, that the Board of County Commissioners is allowing that any and all 911 calls received from the incorporated, from the municipality of the town of Cachen that falls within Logan County be routed to Kingfisher P-SAP.
Yes. And also, all funding associated with the 911 service within the same area would also go to wherever, whatever organization over there, Kingfisher P-SAP.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess they're going to need the same?
Well, it's not the same. It's actually a little different deal. Number seven is our resolution where we annually will say we are giving the services, the service fee that's collected in the unincorporated portions of Logan County to ACOG for the service. We send them the funds, the municipality sends them the funds, actually, it goes to OTC, the Oklahoma Tax Commission. And then the Tax Commission sends the funds back to ACOG, who funds our P-SAP. And that's kind of the way that works.
This is their standard annual fiscal year resolution. However, it does actually include Cachen in here.
Okay, so that's the unincorporated portions of Cachen, the Cachen telephone exchange. Just like it does Guthrie, and just like it does all the other municipalities.
The only reason I point that out is because it doesn't state that. It says, or it's equivalent within the geographical areas of Cachen, Coyle, Langston, Crescent, Mahol, Meridian, Orlando, and Welston. So, it doesn't state the unincorporated.
It never has.
So.
Our resolution back in 2005 states that.
Yeah, this is their standard port. I just wanted to ask, I guess, based on this previous motion?
Right.
If that would have any bearing on the way they've done this?
I don't think so. Right, you didn't talk about that, right?
Yes, and I cleared it up before I left the office.
Okay.
She got one signature. Anyone going to make a motion?
I do make a motion when we approve the resolution.
Oh, sir. All in favor?
Aye. Okay, item eight, put this on the agenda for the sheriff. Damon, ask that we look at the possibility and what it would take to upgrade the hardware, the systems that the sheriff has to be able to get the geographic or the, a little better information other than just a landline telephone call saying, go here, do that. And I certainly supported that. So, we've got some information that our folks from ACOG have brought to us today.
It's just examples of the screen, you know, the maps.
Damon, you want to copy this? Give it a copy, just to show.
Make him come up here, okay?
No, I'm just kidding. So, this visual screen here, I think is what we're looking for, is when the sheriff gets dispatched and their folks get dispatched, that they're able to get a visual on exactly where it's at. And this is what's called in P-SAP speak, a tandem transfer, right? So, a tandem transfer is, the P-SAP still receives all the calls, and, but, once they get a call from the sheriff, they'll be able to do a tandem transfer where the sheriff will be able to see every bit of information that came into the P-SAP as well, in real time, and be able to respond to that. This not only will allow them to receive tandem transfers from our P-SAP, but also any other participating P-SAP. For example, Kingfisher County will also be able to do a tandem transfer to the sheriff. Now, we've been looking at what those things will cost, and we just got this information this morning. These are the costs. And, Damon, I'll let you have this.
I had it.
Oh, okay. See, it's, you're going to be paying for it anyway. So, what we ask them to do, Damon, we ask them to look at three different options, and I'm not, one would be an IP phone, basically, an IP phone where you get information across there. The next one would be a terminal, and then item number three would be the full-up Tier Two support. In any event, this is just informational, Damon, for you, not necessarily, I don't think we have any action. This is just for discussion on what you wanted, and I wanted to make sure, while we got all the folks from ACOG here today and the E-911 folks from our outfit, if you had any questions or if we'd like to comment on any of this, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, I think that, you know, the setup we currently have is definitely not sufficient for the service that our citizens leave in the county. One of the biggest issues we have is Guthrie transfers are called to us, and it's a cellphone, we have no idea where they're at. If an accident happens on the interstate close to the water, the I-35 line, they call us, it turns out to be Edmund, we have to hang up the phone with them and tell them to call a different number, because we can't transfer them. So, in situations like that, I mean, time is of the essence to get, you know, the emergency personnel there, and we have all these different things we have to do in order to get them there. So, we definitely need to look at enhancing that system to some degree, so we can, A, you know, decrease our response time and get them the services that they need, or be able to transfer that immediately without telling them to hang up and call a different number. So, those are some of our objectives that we're trying to get through, is so we have kind of an operational system that we can do everything from receive information and transfer information, so.
So, what this estimate, this attachment I, that y'all sent us, it basically has one-time charges, right? That's non-reoccurring, basically, buy the hardware and circuit installation, so I would assume is in that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that comes to $148,000, somewhere around in there, for the one-time charge. And then, the reoccurring charges for year one. I'm having a hard time reading it. It says the period totals, and then, oh, never mind. So, the reoccurring charges for year one, 2018, would be $55,700 in year two, and $61,000. I assume that that accounts for inflation and those sorts of things, is about a 3% bump, is that what that is? Okay. So, anyway, Damon, that's kind of what it would cost to get there, and I also.
It's a chunk of money.
Sir?
It's a chunk of money.
Well, it's not free. It's not like healthcare, it's not free.
Well, the thing is, I don't mind paying for it, it's just.
Yeah.
Sweet. We can start right at the beginning. That's not where I was going.
If I might add, I'm sure Shelley would call you for E-911, and with that, you'd have to pay the insurance. Sure. Well, I just look at, you know, of course, on my budget, I mean, $55,000 recurring, $58,000 next year, $61,000 the next year, that's, I mean, I understand the one-time purchase of, you know, the hardware and things like that, it's just, you know, to maintain that system for a year at $55,000, $58,000, $61,000, that's extensive.
Is that on par with what our P-SAP charges are, what it costs for those, do we know?
I don't think so.
I don't know, I'd have to go over and look, or, Chris, do you know?
With Guthrie being the established P-SAP, there's, you know, I think there's some bricks and costs there, as far as, I don't know what it is when I was there.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, ACOG provides some funding, actually, it's funding we collect, send to OTC, they get it and bring it back, but, yeah, it's not like free.
And we are looking at the tandem phone, like you was talking about, to have a third station to assist in the call volume, so that if something major happens, we can.
Yeah, that was, that's a good point. It was brought up that if the sheriff had some function like this, or, I don't know if it would require additional hardware, that he could act, that they could act as a backup to the P-SAP if they needed, or something like that, as well?
Yeah, because I think right now, we roll over to Edmund if we get overloaded, and if they get overloaded, it rolls over to Midwest City.
So, this support, management, training, and operations is about half, or a little over half of what this total cost is? Is that contracted out with somebody, or?
Actually, no. When you look at that cost, you're looking at our two hosts, our primary and secondary host, that are hardened facilities, geographically diverse in the Oklahoma City, that's where our servers are, and the fully mesh fiber network, all those costs are incorporated in that. Our, we have a Tier Two support with West and Trotto, we rarely use that.
Yeah, I was just, so I was just wondering how we arrived at those numbers for the sheriff? I mean, I see the fiber charges, and those, gosh, those are high, but they're not out of line. The number that jumped out at me was the, kind of, the tech support charge, that's what it looks like to me.
Sorry, I thought I had about five of them.
Okay.
That would include our Tier Two support with our vendor partner in Trotto and our MAF partner, GeoCom, as well. So, those are fees that we actually paid for our Tier Two support with our vendor partners.
And those charges are non-negotiable part of the contract that ACOG has with those service vendors?
Correct.
Well, we got the ball rolling, Damon, so we got something to look at, anyway.
I appreciate it. Any more discussion?
I've seen their 911 phone, and something needs, I really think something needs to be done, at least if they know, he didn't mention that when we hang up with them, and if they don't get enough information at that point in time, the first thing they do is, hey, that 911 you transferred to us, what's this? They start calling each other agency to find out who transferred that call, because they have no clue who transferred that call to them.
$4,700 a month to get to $55,000 a year. It's not bad if you say it that way.
I wouldn't break it up by the day.
There you go.
Majorly dollars a day.
How many dispatch calls do you get a year? I mean, honestly, if you look at it that way, I didn't mean this to be a pop quiz, but I'm sure it's quite a bit.
Well, we're like dispatch calls or 911 calls?
911 calls.
It'd be difficult to track, you know, even if we can't even tell where they come from.
Right.
We don't have a system to track them.
I know you got delineated for Guthrie, but not for Logan County, sir.
Yeah, how was Guthrie's call? If that's information, then ACOG would, if they could, you know, with time, get that information.
Our RMIAS system is very robust, and I can drill down into how many times Shelley's group transfers the call to Logan County.
Can you get a number for Edmund as well?
Edmund as well. If somebody could shoot me an email.
Sure.
Requesting each report, we can drill down in RMIAS.
Requesting each report. We can drill down in RMIS tools and find out exactly how many transferred.
I've got the email if you need it.
Can you go outside your district, Payne County and Garfield County?
No, sir. Just for your PSAP. How many PSAPs did we have?
This is for ACOG, too.
Twenty-two?
Because we receive phone calls from other PSAPs outside the district, too.
Outside ACOG's district.
Correct, yeah.
I can be able to tell how many incoming calls you have. So by ESC, we can find a way to find it.
But when you look at it like that, I mean, I'm sure it's quite a few that you guys get a year. Then you can break the cost down for call. And then at that time, then it probably looks a little more reasonable. But you still gotta write the check at the end of the day, Damon.
Still gotta find the commission for the money.
He said it arm wrestling for it.
I ain't said anything.
Me neither.
All right, any more discussion on these items? Thank y'all for coming up.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. All righty, here we go. Number nine, consideration possible action on proven resolution lowering the speed limit on Chalk Trail Road between 105 and College.
People doing all kinds of speed. Nobody knows the speed limit. I put up a 45. Everybody's doing that too much, so. Mad as a mush.
I'll second. Yeah, I was doing something else.
Eric, can you take a round for all?
I can. You got to visit with me after a meeting together, man. What are you gonna burn now?
Hopefully nothing. Ten, consideration possible action on proven juvenile detention contracts for 1718.
Those first three are the new, I will explain that that last one says corrected Oklahoma juvenile justice. We had previously approved that contract, sent it back. They kicked it back. They noticed that they had inserted the wrong page regarding the fee in the previous contract. It was from last year and not this year, so they kicked it back to be reapproved at the $40 fee rather than, I think the other said 30, which we would much rather like, but they're not gonna do it, 30. So that's why that's listed as a corrected contract.
I guess we gotta do it, right?
We need them all, I guess. If one's full, we gotta have another one.
I believe we approve them.
Second. Have a motion in second, all in favor.
Aye, aye, aye.
I'm gonna say you have to call DEQ for any burning questions. But I wouldn't say it.
Boy, you just have to say it. But you just said you wouldn't.
No, I might as well say it.
Seeing that smileful look on your face.
I asked you to know about it, but I would never say that.
But it won't end, or DEQ is on? Left consideration possible action on proven 1718 independent contract agreement with Guy Engineering Services on Demand.
This is just a regular agreement, just in case, you know. Commitments to them. Just in case. I believe we approve. I'll second that.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Twelve, consideration possible action on proven professional service contract with Tizdil, over here. Assessor's office.
The board entered this agreement for last fiscal year regarding the protest that has been taken to District Court by DCP on their valuations. And that is still a pending case, and I think this year's is gonna get added to it. So this is the, for this fiscal year with the attorneys that are representing the assessor in that suit.
Sound like a motion. All in favor.
Wow, $275,000.
I'm serious.
Cox cheap to hire lawyers, that's what they said.
That's not one of those things you divide down and make it look better.
But anyway.
Thirteen, consideration possible action on proven 1718 professional service agreement between Columbia and Dimonaz and Logan County Health. I believe we approve. All in favor.
Aye.
Let's roll. Chairman. Fourteen, consideration possible action on rescinding approval of application for distribution of 13,000 CEB funds for steel asphalt.
Mr. Chairman, I thought it was appropriate to bring this to the board to have it re-looked at and disapproved because we'd already approved it. However, we're not gonna be able to get the paperwork in front of the CEB before this paving project happens next week. And so we won't, the project will already be completed before we ask for funds for the project. So we've got a different project in mind for that money now. So I move that we disapprove the previous approval for forest hills. And we'll go ahead and pay for that out of, we're paying for that out of CBRI funds, I believe. Totally, right, yeah.
All right, I got a motion. Also, second, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Fifteen, consideration possible action on proven application of distribution of 13,000 CEB funds for asphalt project for District One.
Okay, the new project that we're gonna use that on, or request to use that on, would be Simmons between Bryant and Helltrank. We've got several bad spots, pushouts on that road. We're gonna repair those and put a two-inch overlay on that. We're scheduled to do that in September. We're gonna start in the middle of August. It's gonna take about a month to fix all the pushouts, and then we're gonna finish the overlay in September.
I make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Sixteen, consideration possible action on proven purchase order from CPRI account to Asco Lemon for asphalt paving for Shields Road, District One. Is this the, what we...
This is part of the commitment list approvals that were made a couple months ago.
I'll move it through. Second. Help, second. Aye.
Check. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Seventeen, consideration possible action on proven detention and transportation claims for May 17. Is that money a debut deposit in for John Dick?
No, it's long.
It's $1,359.92.
I believe we approve.
I'll second. It's all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Eighteen, consideration possible action on resolution.
None on 18 or 19?
Twenty, consideration possible action on content within the items.
We have no transfers. Blankets.
No, I did a good one. Damon, this is, you're actually getting paid for this.
Surprising, you know.
Man, you have so much fun. I figured you'd be using it for free.
Sometimes I feel like it. Saturday's Sunday is pretty.
Yeah.
Time to say maybe do even Wednesday, I want to compete. I'm on it. Just never ends, doesn't it?
Yeah.
That's okay.
You know, Todd, you sent me that email the other day. I really never thought about it like that, but I did right after that. You know, it's tough for the sheriff to get a day off on a weekend because that's mostly when all the nefarious activity gets on. It's Saturday, Friday night, Saturday night, and then they're all hungover on Sunday, so they're, yeah. You get all those calls, too.
That was a 4.2 downgrade to a 3.8 perth lake near Stroud that we filled earlier.
It was right into my chair.
Near Stroud.
Officer.
This one looks like a deed. Troy, if you don't mind, what does it cost to go see Garth tickets anyway?
Garth is actually really great about tickets because every ticket in the joint was the same price. Didn't matter whether it was on the floor or in their nosebleed. They were all the same price. His base ticket price was, I think, 62, but then after you put all the fees on it, it came to 78, 75.
That way everyone in the house has a chance to be on the front row.
Yeah.
That way, some people can afford front row, but it gives everyone a chance to...
To get there. Yeah, one of the other things he used to do when his mother was still alive that I always thought was really great is her specific job at all his concerts was 30 minutes before the show started, she was to go up to the nosebleed section and randomly bring people to the front row on him because he figured that those are the true fans that are willing to pay the price and show up up there.
That's kinda cool.
So that's kind of... That's it for consent.
I think we could send it by order then.
I believe we approve the consent.
All in favor.
Aye.
Twenty-one, consideration possible action on proven claims for payment.
All those Vegas trips.
Yeah, but y'all, going to Vegas for me is kind of like nothing, you know. There's no hotel, you know, any of that kind of cost. I don't have to rent a car. My plan's to go again in September. I don't go anywhere near the strip. Considering what other concert tickets are, I thought they were really reasonable. Paul McCartney's here Tuesday night. His tickets were, what, $117, I think, and up?
Yeah.
When was he here?
I think it's Tuesday night. Now look, George Strait on his final tour was giving $400 bucks for tickets.
$100 for tickets.
I know.
I was just lying. I was looking at my invoice before PM.
Entertaining motion.
I saw a move.
Second. Motion in second, all in favor.
Aye.
Twenty-two, any citizens there to be heard? Here, none. Comments, announcements, questions by the board? Here, none.
Sorry, I just wanted to mention... I'm out of the deal. Just wanted to mention that the sheriff sent an email out about attending the training class he's putting on Saturday and Sunday, the 29th and 30th for inmate supervision. Appreciate that, Damon. Thank you.
But all my guys is already certified on CPR.
All they need to do is bring their card to the testing day on the 3rd.
Thank you, Damon. All righty, 24, adjournment?
Move.
Second.
Aye.